Got a meeting order. We done did the roll call and the. We need to approve the agenda.
So movements chair. They will prove agenda.
Let's vote. Mr. Burst.
Aye.
Mr. Pope.
Aye.
Mr. Tanner.
Aye.
Mr. Burner.
Aye.
Agenda. We approve the agenda. Do we have any guest speaker?
Yes.
In the huh? We do have one, right? Colby. Mr. Colby.
Thank you for your time chairman. My name is Colby Aggleston. I reside at forty-two fifteen Old Walter Town Road in Jamestown. My purpose in addressing the group here today is we all realize that there are some issues in our county that we're all concerned with. I've spoken in previous meetings about sploshed funding. We know we're kind of at an impasse on funding. You guys need money. We don't have a lot. We have a crime issue in Waycross, including with drugs and gangs. And then quite simply, we have an issue with economic development in Waycross. And I actually come to the county today with a compromise that is beginning to spread out across the country, including, I'd like to reference a recent act that was passed in Savannah in reference to the decriminalization of marijuana. I'm just going to read a couple of highlights from the actual preamble of the act that Savannah passed. Whereas the city of Savannah has an interest in maintaining public safety and welfare of the citizens. Whereas the city is committed to operating a safer Savannah by reducing crime. Whereas enactment of an ordinance to enhance public safety, and this is where the costs come in, to eliminate costs by reducing the amount of time police officers spend in connection with arrest, processing and transportation of arrestees related to marijuana. The enactment of the ordinance, and this is actually the highlight to me, further intended to prevent young people from entering the criminal justice system and avoiding the enduring stigma associated therewith. So they actually passed a decriminalization of small amounts of marijuana in the city limits of Savannah. First of all, I want to start off by saying I personally don't enjoy marijuana. I tried it when I was younger. I'm guessing plenty of other people in this room have. It's not my thing. I don't have a personal dog in this fight. I'm a freedom guy. That's really where I come into this. As an employer, I actually am part of the Georgia drug-free workplace. I hire commercial drivers. They have to pass drug tests. So I'm not asking for a free-for-all. What I am asking is that we enact a bill locally that would, instead of calling for incarceration and arrest of small amounts of marijuana possession, that it turn into a fine, something that can be handled at the administrative level. Right now, we're throwing people in jail for small possession charges. And these charges are disproportionately affecting our young people. They're affecting our poorer neighbors, and they're disproportionately affecting minority communities. We have a lot of people that are otherwise employed, contributing members of society. They're contributing sales tax, they're contributing income tax, but we throw them in jail. And now they are on the expense of the county. We're housing these people in our jails. We're feeding them. We're providing them medical care while they are in jail. At the same time, their families are down in income. So a lot of these people are going on food stamps, or they're going on welfare that they might not otherwise. Our young people are experimenting with marijuana, like I said, like I did, like I'm guessing plenty of other people in this room have. Our young people are getting a criminal record. The same young people that are experimenting with marijuana in Savannah neighboring states are not ending up with these criminal records. So when I go as an employer to run a criminal background on these people, the local people are not as qualified as people from out of the city that are from out of state. We are actively putting our young people at a disadvantage because of the criminalization. We're giving a material advantage to people that are coming from the bigger cities and the bigger states. And we're putting our people at a disadvantage when they travel and try to get a job elsewhere. Overall, I feel that the war on drugs is lost. We are one of only thirteen states that still do not have any sort of legalization of marijuana, even for medicinal purposes. I understand that you guys can't change the laws of Georgia. I'm not asking you to. I'm asking you to change how we deal with these small possessions. I feel that you could extend compassion to our neighbors who struggle with PTSD, anxiety, pain and nausea from their cancer treatments. CBD is used for children suffering from epilepsy. There's a lot of medicinal benefits that have been demonstrated. I don't want heroin dens. I don't want meth cooks in our neighborhoods. The data suggests that when we lower our efforts to arrest marijuana possession, the police efforts to increase, actually increase the number of arrests for heroin and meth, those are what's killing our neighbors. Those are what are blowing up our houses. We have bigger issues than a little bit of marijuana. As an added benefit, you'll experience significant savings from not wasting our precious financial resources on prosecuting what is essentially a victimless crime. We should be using these funds to fix our roads, build the law enforcement training center, whatever thing else we want to do with the local money other than improvement on train porch. You guys have needs. I understand that. You have financial needs. And right now, I just feel that we're squandering our resources on prosecuting something that it's not going to be illegal much longer. I think we could just be reprioritizing our efforts locally. So I thank you chairman.
I got a question.
Sure.
Over Savannah. How much it want to cut off?
Right now, up to half an ounce is a fine of, I believe it's a hundred and fifty dollars. And it used to be that they had a cutoff at one, and I think that their cutoff may go up to two ounces now, but I believe it's still down to one ounce. It's not a complete legalization, and it's not for larger amounts. The dealers, they want to get rid of the dealers. They're just saying for the small amounts. And they're very particular in their wording that at no point in time should jail be an appropriate sentence. That's how the way, if you read further into the act in Savannah, it gets rid of jail as an option. There are various things where you can go to a drug court. You can do community service if you don't have the money to pay for it. But it just keeps them out of the, out of the jails themselves. But I believe that their basic cutoff is one half ounce. Yeah. Thank you.
Got.
Sure, I'm sorry.
Yeah, first of all, appreciate you coming in, you know, sharing this with us. My understanding was that pretty much in Georgia, don't we already have something like that where up to a certain amount is not considered jail time or anything like that?
There are different rules. Georgia actually right now does not allow for any level of Delta nine THC to be possessed. There is a medical use for, I believe it's the Delta eight THC derivative that is less than point three milligrams by weight, and it's more of a scientific breakdown. But unfortunately, you cannot get the license to distribute that medicinal quantities and qualities here in Georgia. So while it is legal to possess medical that meets certain criteria, it is not legal for them to get it. So what ends up happening is they have to travel to the other states, Florida, the other areas where it is available to them because currently Georgia does not allow for prescription of it.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Appreciate it. Everybody got anything on that? We'll consider it, I guess. I don't, we can't change the law. It's not our, you know, but we. I understand what you're saying. Maybe we can do something. Pass it on.
I guess, Mr. Chairman, I, from a personal standpoint, I guess it begs the question, okay, once you start opening up that can of worms, or you know, you start a line, like you say, you give them, yeah, somebody to take them out. And I think that's probably what sways on a lot of lawmakers' mind and whatever, that once you start, just do you open up a Pandora's box as to how far does it go? And, but like he was saying, you know, some things maybe years ago that used to merit prison time, now it's more or less like jail or fine, so.
If I may address that.
Okay.
I've done quite a bit of research in reference to Washington's or against Colorado's legalization. What they have found is that the crime rates have maintained very steady, that nothing has increased or decreased necessarily related to their legalization. One of the biggest concerns was what was going to happen to the neighboring counties that were bordered around these states that were not legalized. The, I'm gonna lose, it's the Office of Justice Programs. It's a government department, and one of the things that they pointed out was that the data does not suggest that there's an increase in crime-related property crimes or anything of that nature. The biggest issue has been a change in the focus. As I said, and I think probably Commissioner Tanner would be in a great position. If you take someone off of marijuana detail, they're going to pursue the other drugs. The incarceration, and like I say, I'm not asking for you to legalize heroin or meth or cocaine or anything like that. I'm saying let's, let's change our focus. And as a point of reference, and I think is probably the most pertinent, back in two thousand and one, Portugal decriminalized all drugs. You can now legally possess, not legally, I'm sorry. It is no longer a criminal matter to possess heroin and meth. And the results of their twenty-year experiment, they've been doing this for twenty years. And realistically, if you look at the data, there's actually better results than even the most optimistic expectations. And I, that's not what I want to do. I understand that this is southeast Georgia. We have heritage. We have religious influences. We have a lot of things. I'm not asking. I'm not coming here and asking you to throw open the doors. I think that that's a totally different discussion. All I'm saying is, like you say, let's not change the laws. I'm okay with it still being illegal. What I think we should do is order our law enforcement agencies to approach it from an administrative rather than running people down, arresting people. We have this issue right now. We're having a lot of police confrontation over things that is causing a lot of friction with our citizens. It's just the reality of where we are right now. Overall, marijuana consumption has not dropped despite all the money that's been thrown at it by the federal, the state, the local governments over the last twenty, thirty years since the war on drugs really began in earnest. Our people are spending money, but there's no change in the consumption. And with the legalization and the decriminalization around us, I think we all see that's where the tide is turning. It's going to be legalized at some point in time. In the meantime, I think that we just have better uses. And you know, I've come here and said before, I don't want you spending any more of our money. I don't have any more to give you. I think this is a better utilization of what you already have, rather than us incarcerating people, breaking up families and the children, and I say children, the young adults, the teenagers that are becoming young adults. I can't hire some of these people. I want to hire some local people. But you know, they had a little possession charge over two grams of marijuana, which is basically irrelevant. That's, you know, an evening smoking at home for them and their girlfriend. I can't hire these people because they have criminal backgrounds. I think we could do a much better job of making our workforce more presentable to the outside communities, but also so that I can hire locally. We have people that are basically getting ruled out of occupational opportunities because they have the stigma associated with it.
Colby.
Yeah.
Let me ask you. Two things. One, didn't we formed a drug court for this purpose? That if they pass the drug, if they go to the drug court and they pass the program, it's null and void.
Yes, there are absolutely rules for.
Are we looking at what you're talking about? Is that you're talking about civil only where they pay a fine?
Yes.
No crime.
Yes, like a seatbelt ticket. Basically, it's a citation that there is a negative deterrent. There is still a reason to avoid it. And a lot of what has been done in some of these other areas, like the Portugal experiment, what they have done is rather than spending this money on housing and feeding these people, they're actually using it for education purposes. I think we're all adults in here. We can have a conversation where we know kids are going to get in trouble. We've all gotten in trouble at some point in our age. And I'm guessing there's people in this room, maybe even on this body right here that had they been caught with a little bit of weed in their pocket in the late sixties, the late seventies, that maybe you wouldn't be sitting here. Your opportunities, I'm not accusing anyone, but there are people in here whose life trajectory could have been changed had they gotten in trouble with something that's a rite of passage at this point in time almost, is kind of how I look at it. I just feel we have bigger issues to be focusing our attention on. Let's focus on the effort, you know, the, the dare. Let's keep our kids off drugs. That's great. But the reality is, is we have fentanyl coming across our borders. We have cocaine. We have methamphetamine. We have heroin. We have some really nasty things out there that are way more important than something that honestly, I could grow it on my porch in a little pot. And it has some benefits. It has something that can be used. Alcohol doesn't have that same, tobacco doesn't have that same benefit, and yet those are ostensibly legal products. There are medical benefits, and we have these people that are living in a stigma. They're still going to go buy some because their kid has seizures. They're still going to go buy some because they're dealing with nausea from cancer. I just lost my mother-in-law to cancer recently. I know the pain. If there's something that could have remedied some of her discomfort, I don't understand from a compassion standpoint how we can continue to fight against it. But yes, in regards, there are instances with the drug courts that will kind of direct people. You know, you have your first offender, you have your second offender. I don't believe in heroin on the corner, on the streets. I don't believe in cocaine. I think that it's using a machete for something that could be using a fine chisel. Thank you for your time, gentlemen.
Other words. You saying marijuana could be measured, I guess, like alcohol, and what is it, point eight, that you don't have to? Not arrested or something? You got so many points, is that right?
Alcohol consumption, if you're talking about like a driving standpoint, and that's one of the things that California and Oregon and Colorado have been working on. There are still rules that say you can't drive while you're under the influence, and I'm sure the former chief here could tell you. There are rules that could still apply. There's less than safe. There's driving under the influence of a lot of things. It may not be something that you can blow into a tube and it tells you that you've hit that limit. When you are driving, a lot of the drunk drivers that are pulled over, pulled over because they're crossing the lines, because they're running through red lights, because they're coming to stops at weird points at the stop signs and the stoplights. There's still ways of identifying an impaired driver, and I'm a hundred percent opposed to impaired driving. What I'm saying is, is let's treat this the same way that we treat alcohol. Let's not consume it in public. Let's not drive while we're consuming it. But if you want to relax with some at the house, it, to me, it has the same ultimate goal of a social setting, unwinding at the end of the night at home. But in the meantime, you have to be able to obtain it and possess it, and that's where we run afoul.
Okay.
All right.
I'm not against drinking and drugging, but I can't do it myself.
Say that again.
Let me tell you a little story about drinking and drugs. Old man told me a long time ago, he said it'll make you go hungry in the steal, make you miss a lot of good meals, make you go down to the bar and spend your last dollar. Make you wear your summer clothes in the wintertime. Let's get on.
Oh boy.
Okay. We need to approve the minutes for the last session. Is that right, Scott?
Yes, sir. It is, sir. There's two there for two different dates.
Okay, we need to do all of those.
I make a motion to approve the. Prove the minute.
Second.
I'll second.
Okay, let's vote on it. All in favor. Mr. Burst. Mr. Pope.
Aye.
Mr. Tanner.
Aye.
Mr. Burner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay, now we're going to agenda items on, A, the Georgia DOT, the L-MIG Safety Action Plan, the Strapping Project.
I make a motion that we accept that.
We accept the, do we have the?
List.
On it? I mean, do we?
Just list, I think.
Yep. Yes, just approving the list for us to send to DOT.
Okay. Have a second. Second. So a vote on it. Mr. Burst.
Aye.
Mr. Pope.
Aye.
Mr. Tanner.
Aye.
Mr. Burner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. All right, now on the Smith Road Paying Project, that project, the property condemnation. We want to move on, go ahead with that? Is that what we want to do, move to? To condemn that property, let, let the, let that continue. So I hear motion to do that.
So movements, Jeff.
Take it. I'll second. We'll vote.
So chairman, before.
There's any discussion on?
Yes. Is this all the property out there? Is there any more?
There, there, there is. This is the, this is the list of properties where they haven't signed.
That haven't signed.
That haven't signed. That's the remaining portion.
Okay, so once this taken care of, okay.
Yeah, there's five pieces of it, I believe, small sections. It's just, we can't get a sign off on it.
Okay.
What we're going to do, let it go.
Okay.
Condemn it and take it.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay, appreciate it. Let's vote on it. Mr. Burst.
Aye.
Mr. Pope.
Aye.
Mr. Tanner.
Aye.
Mr. Burner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We move on that. Now, the road closed and abandoned that portion of the Corbett Road. I hear a motion on it.
Will I make a motion? We ain't going to be closing the Corbett Road.
You get a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion on?
Pause the motion.
Make a motion to reclose portion of Corbett Road.
He don't close it.
Mr. Chairman.
Second from Mr. Burst.
Mr. Chairman, just based on what our, Mr. Schubert said earlier, I just wanted to mention, he did make a recommendation that if there was a a motion to close the road, that that be conditional upon a cul-de-sac being put at the north end of the, of Corbett Road and built to the county specifications, surveyed and then deeded to the county, so that there's a turnaround spot there.
Rest is agreeable?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I didn't get that now. You, what now?
Mr. Schubert had recommended earlier that if, if it was the commission's desire to close the road, that there be a turnaround, a cul-de-sac put at the north end of Corbett Road so that then there would be a place to turn around.
Would they, wouldn't they need to be one at both ends?
I was saying, say intersection right there, I believe.
You got, okay, you do have intersection on the, okay. Footlog road has an intersection. Now, I want to ask you something. If we're going to close that road and if it books the closing, shouldn't they pay the county for that road, for that property at the same rate we have to buy it for?
My understanding is this is, this, I believe, I believe this was just a road.
Then give it to them.
Is this just a prescriptive road?
Were payment back to the county if it's approved road which is payment. So our road closure banner says it's road paid, and it's closed abandoned, and the owners who requested the close abandoned themselves paid the county back for the approvals that really doesn't, doesn't address the.
Is this a prescriptive?
Best I can tell is the old thirty-foot right is prescribed right away, from what I saw.
If we could track back that there were deeds where we, the county had purchased.
They had purchased.
If they had purchased the road or something of that sort, then there is, there is an avenue under the law for that. But generally, if it's a prescriptive right that the county has, meaning it was just, it became the county's by use over the years, then there generally is no payment in that situation.
Okay. Okay.
There's no drainage easement needed if you close it?
Michael says he doesn't need any easements. I discussed it with Michael as closing it. How it would mess with the logistics of grading and any drainage easements. He said it wasn't, it wouldn't affect him at all.
Okay, nice, Jane. If we ask for a motion in, what I'd like to do is ask for one, if we build a covey site at they, at their expense.
Let me redo my motion. I make a motion to close Corbett Road under that they will build a course site where it need.
Big enough for a low boy and a fire truck to turn around. No pickup truck. If you go down there and find a fire, it's got to be, it needs to be long enough. I haven't seen them jam up, came back out. If you're going to give up that much land, then you ought to be able to build a road big enough, am I right, Mr. Tanner? That you could go down in there and he could turn around, he could turn a truck around.
Well, I'm going to tell you one thing. If I go down there and I need to turn around, ain't nothing going to stop me in a big old truck.
Well, if you ain't got a big enough payday, you can't, you can't turn it around.
I'll get it off the thing. I'll get it out. Won't bench. But yeah, I agree that ought to satisfy the safety for our firefighters and things. Won't the engineer have to approve the design?
Require that on.
Sir. Won't the engineers have to approve the design before it's accepted, Mr. Burner?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Tatum, he say he's agreeable to whatever the county requires as far as a cover site and it be done the county's specification.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I have a motion to approve.
What, what radius covey site would need for a semi-turnaround?
A big.
I don't know. Our ordinance calls for a fifty-foot radius, which would be a hundred-foot crossway from side to side. So I'm not sure what, what radius that would be to approve. I guess we'll get with Brandon and find out what the uniform traffic says, DOT can? I'm just asking for some raises.
How about can we approve this or not approve it, and he can research it, but as long as it's done to specifications? We're doing a cul-de-sac.
Yeah, that's what this motion is.
So we don't have to have that exact measurement tonight, right? Am I wrong?
Because we have to sign off on some of the, the property or something like that before they can really close it off, right?
We will, the county will execute quick claim deeds once the property is closed.
Okay, well, once, I mean, can we hold off on those deeds until such a time that they build the covey site to the specification of the county?
Yes, and we will also, well, we'll do all that at the same time. We'll have the property owner should get the cul-de-sac surveyed, have it built to the county engineer's specifications, and then quick claim deed the cul-de-sac to the county. And then at the same time, the county will quick claim deed the portion of Corbett Road that's being closed to the property owner.
Can we also put in there that I B. Products will pay all legal costs? Since is our idea?
Oh, yeah, that why we do that.
Illegal cost?
All the deed changes, quick claim, I B. respond for all legal costs.
Is that the petitioner?
Rest of y'all do that, pay all legal costs?
Is that normal? Because I would like the same thing to happen for us as anyone else if they were doing it. I mean, I'm willing to do what we have to do. I just want to do it the right way.
Yeah, you have to pay the cost on, on closing the road. I tried to close one more time to get paid cost on it.
Covey site, that's, that was established in the beginning if that would be the requirements.
Is that cost on it?
It, it is not normal, I would not say for, you know, a property owner who's requested to close a road. There's an application. There's an application fee they pay in the beginning.
Four hundred and fifty dollars.
And, and that covers the cost of the process, so it would be outside the normal course of business if that's the question, you know, to ask a property owner to pay any additional fees, except for the cul-de-sac, which is a condition of the road closure.
Chairman, I think, you know, based on what we're hearing here, that whatever the normal procedure is for the road closure, Mr. Tatum or whoever, his company, whatever, they incur that same cost and, you know, and not anything outside of it, the cost is, if you do that, then you're going to pretty much have to do it for everyone then.
Yeah.
It's a four hundred and fifty dollar application fee, plus the cost of them to build, survey, dedicate the cul-de-sac portion to where it came.
Right, okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Okay, I have a motion to do it. I made a motion.
Second.
You're putting a motion now? We got another motion or what?
We got a motion now. Second, any discussion on it?
Close, just one discussion. No, I don't have any discussion.
Let's vote on it then. Mr. Burson?
Aye.
Mr. Pope?
No.
Mr. Tanner?
Aye.
Mr. Burner?
Aye.
I vote aye. Three, two. All right, it's closed. The county manager will report.
I don't have anything.
You don't have anything?
Chairman.
Commission comment? Anybody got anything?
One of the, one of the reasons this request came in, from what we heard, was trash everywhere. I get complaints, Washington Avenue, oh nine, trash, trash, trash. I've been with Schubert. And that Mr. Moy brought up DeWitt Street. We've discussed possibility of hiring a, another code enforcement officer to concentrate on this. It's a bad problem. And I think that I would like, I know I would like to see if you, if y'all would agree, Mr. Moy come back with a proposal of hiring an officer to concentrate on this, file it through court, fine, lockup, whatever we got to do to at least try to get a handle on it. Mr. Schubert says that magistrate court does prosecute the cases that he brings. So I think it's important that we take that step. That's my recommendation and comments.
Also, to Mr. Chairman, in addition to what he was saying about the trash, my understanding is that that's not the only reason for wanting to request to close a portion of that road. There's a lot of other activities that's led to have, that are going on out there. It's also from a liability standpoint, tearing out of the gates and whatever. So it's, it's more than just, just trash. But this is what's, that's just one aspect of it.
Right. Well, you're going to inconvenience some people, I tell you that. I'm not foreclosing the road. It's going to inconvenience some people.
Close that road and it not, I don't, I don't feel that way.
It's good to see, but that's the way it is. I hear a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor of Mr. Burson?
Aye.
Mr. Pope?
Aye.
Mr. Tanner?
Aye.
Mr. Burner?
Aye.
Adjourn.